Jennifer, everything's ready to go correct? Okay, thank you so much. Welcome to the Cheyenne City Council Work Session Agenda for Wise Water Action Committee, June 30th, 2023. For all of those in the room, if you could please turn your phones to silent or vibrate. For everyone on Zoom, if you could please put yourself to mute. As with all work sessions, there is no public comment. Jennifer, who do we have online, please?
So we have Dr. Aldridge and Councilman Seagrave online.
We noted that Councilman Seagrave and Dr. Aldridge are online. And with me today are Councilman Roybo, Councilman Rennie, and Councilman Layborn. We will go ahead and start with item number one for introduction. I have it, this is, okay, who's, um, is he? Go ahead, I guess, who's ever speaking first on item number one? Uh, well, yeah, it says a BOPU water conservation, so, okay, go ahead.
Good afternoon, City Council and members of the public. And Mayor Collins, thank you for attending. Appreciate your time today for us to visit with you about Cheyenne's water. The Wise Water Action Committee formed last year at the Growing Water Smart Workshop. And our water conservation resource to the city of Cheyenne. You can reach any of us by email. Several of us are here today. We have allotted thirty minutes for presentation and thirty minutes for discussion. Please hold your questions until the end, but we do want to encourage that discussion. Today, we'll be talking about Cheyenne's water supply, the status of Colorado River curtailment, current Cheyenne water conservation practices, water conservation in other communities, and wise water development. President Johnson, do I have the okay to go ahead with the agenda?
Yes, just as you stated, since you have thirty minutes to present at twelve thirty, I will be turning the chair over for questions to Councilman Roybo, since I have to get back to work. But yes, please continue.
Okay, thank you. Water from three hydrologic basins support Cheyenne's water supply, including the White Yampa, which is part of the upper Colorado River Basin that is west of the Continental Divide shown in red, and the North and South Platte that are east of the Continental Divide. Water rights can get quickly complicated. This is my attempt to summarize all the hydraulic complexity that exists in time and space into one slide. The hydrologic basins are shown here again from the previous slide, the White Yampa, North Platte, and South Platte. Note the water rights and basins are correlated by color. The main thing to understand is that Cheyenne started early before Wyoming was a state in acquiring water rights, searching far and wide to secure Cheyenne's future. The potential for Cheyenne to lose water rights in the White Yampa, again, the upper Colorado River Basin, will be discussed later in this presentation. And make sure you have all this memorized, because there will be a quiz at the end. Brownwater resources to the west of Cheyenne supply approximately three thousand acre feet per year. Aquifers must be managed carefully to avoid depletion. Recharge depends on infiltration rates based on soil type, combined with the amount, timing, and form of precipitation, rain or snow, throughout the year. Long-term drought can affect both groundwater and surface water supplies, but looming even more imminently is the Colorado River crisis that has already left some communities in the west dry and could even impact Cheyenne.
I'm Bryce Stor, Capital Project Supervisor, Board of Public Utilities. So this graph here is really representing the breakdown of Cheyenne's water from a, a source kind of outlook. So the, the three main sources of water that, that we supply to town are groundwater, our local surface water source, mainly the Crow Creek, and our trans-basin system, which that's our Colorado River supply that includes the Hog Park Reservoir and Rob Roy Reservoir Trans Basin Trade Exchange System that we'll talk about a little bit more. But really, the thing to look at this on, on, on this graph really is that trans-basin being nearly seventy percent of our, our firm yield every year. So it is a major contributor to Cheyenne's water. And without it, we never would have been able to get to where we are today. So this schematic is our, our simplification of how our trans-basin system works. On the left side of the screen, you can see the Hog Park, Hog Park portion of the system. And on the right is the Rob Roy system. And then to the far left, you see the Continental Divide that Sarah alluded to earlier. But really, the best way to think about this system is, is almost like your, your typical bank account. What we'll do is we will take our debits into, there we go, into the, from the Little Snake Collection, Spring Runoff, we'll collect and we will bring that water against the grade. That water would normally flow west, but we bring it east underneath a tunnel that goes underneath the Continental Divide. Maybe, there we go. And then we store that water into Hog Park. And as soon as it's in Hog Park, we can use it, whether it's under curtailment or not. So essentially, any water that we have stored in Hog Park is available to Cheyenne. From there, when we need it in town, we will release that water and it will travel down Hog Park Creek into the encampment, into the North Platte, and ultimately, and in the Semino Storage Reservoir, which is essentially our storage account. So this is where we keep our ledger. We also have, we pay for storage in Semino. Any water that makes it to Semino is also available for Cheyenne under curtailment. When we're ready to actually bring physical water to Cheyenne, this is where the magic happens. We take our water right, which is that Hog Park side and, and Semino, and we convert it to physical water that we're able to collect and store in Rob Roy. From there, it goes into pipelines and comes to Cheyenne. So it's important to remember that, under curtailment, we would have access to whatever water is stored in this system between the three reservoirs. However, we would not be able to collect any of that spring runoff that would come down Little Snake and come underneath the tunnel.
Colorado River curtailment means that Cheyenne's water rights on the Little Snake River in the upper Colorado River Basin are at risk. We could lose as much as approximately seven thousand acre feet of our surface water, which puts us in a deficit with current annual demand. Some may wonder, since there's been so much snow and rain this winter, are we in the clear? The answer is no, and here's why. While drought can significantly impact our water supplies, overallocation of water rights over the past one hundred-plus years is a bigger issue that is harder to solve. This is known as tragedy of the commons, occurring when there's an outsized demand on a finite resource and lack of adequate management controls. To clarify how this relates to water rights in the west, irrigators must use it or lose it. If they don't apply water to their fields, they could risk abandonment of their right. Long ago, water managers placed a bet on water surplus to grow the west. Many of us benefit from this management approach today, but the writing is on the wall. For decades, lower basin states have used more than their fair share, according to the law of the river. But in the end, their economic might and sheer numbers will trump that bet from long ago, and Cheyenne will be left to negotiate on an open market of water rights that will go to the highest bidder. While decision-makers establish policies and strategies for managing the commons on the Colorado River, the rest of us can start taking actions to adapt, because it's clear what the future holds, and that's less water.
A brief overview of the doctrine that governs water rights. It's the prior appropriation doctrine. So this is just a little bit of a history, how, how it was developed and how it dictates water rights here. So it began, began as a custom of the California Gold Rush with miners, where miners would stake claims. And when you struck your claim, you were the first in time and you had that right to the claim. So that's where first in time, first in right comes. And miners eventually were settling water rights under miner claims until it became a bit more fledged out. And then Spanish and Mexican law allowed water to be used on lands away from the stream. Typically, in the East Coast, you have to be on your stream to be able to use that water. But in the west, we are able to divert water hundreds of miles away to use it. And then, thirdly, Mormon Irrigators in Utah practice cooperative irrigation. The church generally saw that all property held was managed for the benefit of their community. So that's where beneficial use comes in play, or the water that you use has to be put to a beneficial use. And beneficial use, the definition has been expanding over years, but it's typically irrigation, agriculture, development in cities, and recreation has been added in certain states, but not all. So the takeaway here is first in time, first in right, must be used for a beneficial use, or you lose it.
As I mentioned earlier, Cheyenne gets some of its water through a trans-basin diversion off the Little Snake River in the White Yampa River Basin, which is part of the upper Colorado River Basin. Several other cities on the Front Range and further south in New Mexico also receive Colorado River water. We are all closely watching developments unfold, especially the levels of Lake Powell and Lake Mead, which trigger cuts for Wyoming, Colorado, Utah, New Mexico, Arizona, California, and the country of Mexico to meet obligations under the Colorado River Compact.
So, as everyone's probably heard, the Colorado River and curtailment has been a hot buzzword. Recently, the lower basin states, California, Arizona, Nevada, have all agreed to cut water usage by three million acre feet until the end of 2026. And that's when the current law of the Colorado River expires. So that's going to be a big time in the water resources area. And this cut wasn't done on their own. They had to do the cut to receive one point two billion dollars in aid by the bipartisan infrastructure law. So it was not give and take, it was, you needed to give up some. And then, so what about this wet winter? We all know that this was a historical winter in most of the US. You can see here, we have a diagram of all the water basins. Anything in green is good, green and blue is even better. Typically, this map, the last few years have been red. So we see that, and like, all right, that's great. Recently, Brad Udall, he's a Colorado River expert at CSU. He spoke at a law conference, and he said it would take approximately twenty years to fill up the reservoirs. And that's incorporating that there is going to be yearly cycles of less snow and more snow. If we were to get this historical winter six years in a row, then the reservoirs would be full. But we all know that's not going to likely happen. So here, we have a graph of Lake Powell, and the black line currently shows where it is, and that's forty-one percent full. But the other lines on the graph show the last five years. So we can see how that fluctuates, and just that we have one good year doesn't mean that we're going to be out of the blue. Because we're, the red line on the top of the graph, that was 2019, that was a relatively wet year. But then the pink line that we just surpassed with the black line, that was 2020. So we, it changes very fast. And looking at the other reservoir, it's a lot less fun to look at. So you can see that the flows have been, there's been less variation in the flows, and we're only thirty-one percent full. So this wet winter hasn't really pushed our major reservoirs to the point where we can have, be out of this crisis.
Cheyenne is keenly aware of the need for water conservation and has initiatives in place to use water efficiently. As we mentioned, water shortage can occur for various reasons, including drought and water rights administration, including Colorado River curtailment, but also infrastructure limitations or failure and water contamination. Water shortage can occur without notice, which is why a plan is essential for coordinating response actions. Water conservation as the norm is a way to prepare for shortage. Education and outreach is ongoing to local community groups and schools. We are exploring ways to expand the recycled water system and strengthen landscape ordinances. Our water is a basic indoor retrofit program for BOPU customers that will also be expanded. Advanced metering infrastructure, or AMI, is a means of using technology, including smart meters and cellular gateways to identify leaks and high consumption. Water waste can result from inefficient fixtures in bathrooms, kitchens, and irrigation systems, and also leaks. This adds up to thousands of gallons per customer per year. Regular leak checks can save money on water and avoid property damage that can happen if small leaks become large leaks. Wasted water costs all of us. Last year, BOPU's operational expenses to deliver drinking water to our customers was over twenty-one million dollars. This factors into water rates and service charges for our customers. But with inflation and other economic factors, BOPU's costs are expected to rise, as will monthly bills for all of us. If we can reduce water consumption by using water efficiently, we can reduce BOPU's short-term and long-term costs. EPA estimates fifty percent less water wasted by using water efficiently outdoors and twenty percent water savings by using efficient indoor fixtures. Indoor water waste, such as toilet leaks, goes right down the drain and is treated again at the wastewater treatment plant. This also factors into wastewater operational costs that are charged to customers. BOPU's wastewater operation, operating expenses last year were over eleven million dollars. If you think of leaks as water that is treated twice but never used once, you may think twice about water conservation. And since that was my last slide, it's quiz time. So does anyone remember what's Cheyenne's oldest water right? Good, I'm glad to mention. Thank you, yep.
So looking at other communities and what they have done, because we're not alone in this issue. It's the majority of the population of the west will be facing this. Aurora, last year unanimously approved an ordinance limiting the use of cool weather turf in new developments and golf courses. So what this does, this prohibits turf in common areas, medians, curbside landscaping, and front yards. Backyard turf is limited to forty-five percent of the area or five hundred square feet, whichever is smaller. Turf is allowed in new, new developments if it's placed in an active or programmed recreation area. So we don't want to get fully rid of turf, but there is, turf is one of the easiest ways to conserve water. So looking at this, some pros to doing this, with that it would cut water use drastically, not having front yards and non-functional turf grass. Some cons, that this might increase housing costs, because they would have to seek alternative landscaping to meet points. And there would be the need of staff to aid and monitor the transition, because a lot of these programs have it where staff will go out, have a complimentary check, show them, all right, this is your yard, and this is what it's going to look like after. And they'll come out after and make sure sprinklers are set correctly and all that, to make sure that what you just put in doesn't end up wasting water. And then, Park City, Utah, beginning this year, will offer two dollars per square foot of turf removed and replaced with water-wise and fire-wise landscaping. And so this has a minimum removal, removal of two hundred and fifty square foot of turf. And Park City offers up to ten thousand dollars for residential users and fifty thousand for commercial. And moving, the state of Utah also has a program where it's them and their participating water districts offering up to three dollars per square foot, and that is up to fifty thousand dollars per project. So some pros for this, that it incentivizes the replacement of turf rather than just requiring it. It requires water-wise species, and by having more of the incentive program, it would likely have better outreach with the community, where you're not forcing them, you're more working with them. Some cons, it does cost money, and there'd be more, a need for more staff and bandwidth to do the issues with the last slide. And so another one is that this is typically where communities will start to branch out, and that's not allowing turf in the road strips, or road verges, landscape strips between the sidewalk and the street. Those are typically anywhere from six to five feet, where regular sprinklers operate best at over eight feet. So there's three feet of overspray. So by replacing those and having landscaping that is done by turf or drip irrigation, has seen, a lot of communities have seen the advantage of limiting water waste and still having a productive landscape. Some pros to this is that it is a quick and easy way of making a change. It does require water-wise species. You do have good outreach in relation with the community, as these are incentivized typically. Cons, that is, the last two, they're costly, and you need more staff bandwidth to make sure that what is in place is actually fulfilled.
So I think Lonnie just went through a lot of stuff that other communities are doing. I'll try to give a little brief overview of kind of what we are currently doing and have planned. So for the curtailment planning, I mean, we've talked to you about filling our cup before. How do we make sure we have adequate water supply? Really looking at it from three points of view, conservation is a very large one. Without it, from what we've already done in Cheyenne, we'd be in a much, much scarier position than we are now currently. Capital improvements, that's anything from developing water resources on the Bell Bore to doing water reuse projects. While these are effective, they are also expensive. So a lot of anything that goes into that bucket would be represented on rate increases, things of that nature. And then finally, looking at additional water rights. So a lot of this effort has been in relation to the Colorado River curtailment. So a lot of it we're looking at would be water rights that could be used during a curtailment that would be able to easily integrate into our existing system. So how do we get to water-wise development? We kind of see it as a, you know, maybe three-pronged approach again here, collaboration policy and outreach. So from a collaboration standpoint, we really try to work really hard with the developers, the design engineers on all of these projects, other partners within the community. And we are very diligent in evaluating every project to make sure that we have the infrastructure available to serve that project. And that's what this worksheet represents. We send that out to the developer, they fill it out, they give us a very detailed estimate of what they think that their project's going to need. We then take that, we put it into a hydraulic model that ensures that our infrastructure is adequate to serve that development. And then we also take a look at our treatment and water supply to see what that impact would be. So this worksheet helps us look at, you know, what we currently have in terms of firm yield, what we're using as a community, and then what the impact of that proposed development would do to our surplus. So I want to call out a few numbers on this. The, we'll just focus on the yellow box right now. That top number is assuming six hundred new residences per year, which is a very conservative number. That's about double what we've been averaging over the last five years during what I think was a pretty, pretty big boom for Cheyenne in terms of housing development. Even with that number, we still estimate that, that we have almost twenty years of surplus if we were to build six hundred new homes every year. And just one interesting note on that, I alluded to the conservation that we've already worked on in the past. The water treatment plan, actually, within the first year, was maxed out. So we have greatly reduced our peak day water demand on the system. A lot of that driven through tiered rates and the recycled water system. And then the one that's, that's probably a little more interesting to everyone right now, that bottom box, the blue one, that's our annual water supply, so that's the firm yield, that's how much water we can bring into town every year, based on the numbers that we're showing here. Now, this doesn't include some of the, the bigger commercial developments that are being looked at. But as we sit today, we have nearly forty years of water growing at six hundred homes a year. So we do have water, we're in a different place than a lot of these other communities that are offering, you know, discounts to residents to convert turf. But that's why conservation is so important now, so that we can use our water where we want it and what we find most beneficial to the community. So in the past, typically, we'd just create a memo and say, all right, you guys are good to go. But we probably need to ask another question. Is it worth it, the amount of water that we're proposing to each development? So what we're looking into now, working with leads and some other partners, is trying to develop a metric that we can compare what the economic and communal benefit is to Cheyenne compared to how much of our resources are being consumed. So on the numerator of that factor, we would be looking, you know, at things, you know, monetary, jobs. What's the economic diversity that this new development would, would bring in? So kind of a holistic view, a lot of different things, trying to focus that down into kind of one number. And then the resource part of it is, is complex. It's not just, you know, they're going to use a million gallons, and that's the number we, we pick, because it, the different ways that you can use the water has different impacts to the system. So similar to the way we calculate our system development fees, we're going to look at average day, max day, and peak hour demands. And those each have a corresponding response to the system. So an average day demand helps you determine how much water they're going to pull out of the system, our cup. And then the next two, max day and peak hour, are more, you know, kind of that straw throughput outlook. So max day will tell you how much we need at the water treatment plant. And then the peak hour number helps us determine kind of the pipelines across town, the big transmission lines, and what impact that'll have on the system. So the next one, we'll talk about policy. I think a lot of us know a couple of things that we're already looking at. Plan for Wise Water Use, tiered rates, the UDC, you know, a lot of things that, that we're working through now and trying to improve. But there's also some other things that we can do, potential things in the future. Lonnie alluded to some other communities, and a lot of them don't have any surplus. So when they're looking at development, they're looking at net zero development, which essentially means the developer either, one, has to bring in new water supply to the system, or, two, they have to do something within the community that would offset what water they are using. And actually, here recently, we have done something similar to this with the gold mine proposed west of town. They are developing a water supply, a new well field that will not only, you know, provide the water they need, but then, once that project is done, the city and will have additional water supply thanks to that project. The other thing that I think is interesting to discuss, it's been kind of a hot topic of late, would be outside users agreements. And the way that I'd like to talk through this is maybe using North Cheyenne as an example. In nineteen ninety-three, the Wyoming Water Development Commission issued a study on North Cheyenne to investigate a potential failure of wellfields on the north side of town. They looked at the declining water levels, degradation of water quality, which is essentially the septic systems leaching into the water, creating nitrate levels that, that would be unhealthy for utilizing that water as a drinking water source. And then just the physical deterioration of the wells. As we know, with the, you know, large amounts of money that we put into rehabilitating our system every year, everything's going to fail eventually. And we're getting to a point where we're, we're starting to see a lot of the deterioration of wells and, and physical failure out north. So really, what would be the advantage to us to create policy that might dictate how a rural subdivision may be interested in, in entering an outside users agreement with BOPU in the city? Well, the first thing that we would do, take a step back. So as part of that master plan, the study actually came up with this rural system as the best alternative, that picture there. So those, the sizes of those lines are really only intended for indoor water use, maybe some supplemental drip irrigation outdoors. So they, they, their study proposed that, that tying into the BOPU system and developing this rural water system would be the best approach. So I think for us to understand that and to get ahead of that has a lot of advantages. If we have this policy set in place, we could essentially dictate the water that would be allowed to be used in any sort of rural system that we're, would tie on. We could dictate a fee structure. I know that the mayor has worked worked with the University of Wyoming to come up with a study that says, you know, for every person that lives in the county, it's somewhere around a $600 detriment to the city based on the city services that those county residents are using. So introducing some sort of fee that could be tied to the outside users agreement could be something that could benefit, you know, both those county residents as well as the city as a whole. You know, and then I referenced before, we can control the narrative. If we get ahead of this and we don't wait for a crisis where we have to just respond and we end up, you know, just building pipelines the way we do it in town. And now they're irrigating, you know, thousands of acres out there and we really be out of water in that situation. And then the final thing is really the consideration of regionalization. And every application that I have put together for state funding has asked, are you a regional system? Are you combining resources? Are you using water to the most efficient, effective way it can be used from a statewide perspective? And that is looked on very favorably from the state. At some, for some of our ARPA funding that we looked at, you actually got bonus points if you were part of a regional system. So being part of this and being willing to, you know, help our quote unquote neighbors could potentially set us up to be in a better position for funding in the future as well.
To let you know, since it is 12:30, and for housekeeping, I will turn this over to Councilman Robb at the state. Thank you.
Thank you. So and then our last one that we're really looking at is, you know, outreach is very important. I don't think that we can do this alone. We can't do this through forcing it on folks. It's really important for people to understand the value of water conservation and a willingness to want to do it. And one of the ways that we're really looking at doing this is through the, our Legacy Landscapes Program. So this is essentially a map that Sarah's put together that will identify areas around town, whether they're public areas or private residences that have implemented, you know, landscapes that are one, you know, low water usage as well as, you know, beautiful. So just giving people the opportunity to go look and see what the future could look like. I know we've heard from you more than once that we don't just want to have the Arizona look with rock, rock, rock everywhere. So this is an opportunity for people to educate themselves a little bit on that front. And then Sarah's also developed this questionnaire or nomination form, maybe we call it that, to where anyone in the public that is aware of one of these landscapes can fill this out. It's located on our website. And then we can, you can be, have your property or whatever property you want to nominate added to the list. From a city standpoint, we've already converted a couple of different projects. The one on the left is on 12th Street. That was recently completed from an old turf traffic island to something that I think looks pretty nice and really blends in well. And then on the right, there is another traffic island that is at Kerry and Randall. Again, recently completed as part of the 26th Street Stormwater Project. And again, you can see it, you know, have the cursor building backdrop there. It, it really blends in nicely to that. And then from the, you know, Wise Water Action Committee standpoint, we applied for a grant from the Sonoran Institute for $10,000 to team up with city parks as well as the Leadership Cheyenne Group to convert Robert Burns Park from turf to a low water landscape. Again, in that same 26th Street corridor, very visible on the parade route to other legislatures and things that would be working in that area. So we hope that this would be a kind of example of what could be. And then that rock there is just to kind of show that we'll be incorporating some informational lackers or whatever you want to call it to just help educate and let people know what, maybe how much water the park saved, those types of things. And then I think we're ready to open it up to any sort of discussion that you guys would like to have. Really to try to get towards, you know, your goal of a Wise Water Use city. So thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from committee? We have any hands raised?
Dr. Aldridge has her hand raised.
Okay, Dr. Aldridge.
Uh, thank you, Chairman Robb, through you. I am, I've listened to all the information. I hear continually about how we need to preserve and reserve water. I've been traveling this week and was actually in Minneapolis earlier this week. And on the news they had where one subdivision had basically drained another subdivision's water and was being sued because one subdivision had to drill deeper to hit water. So each homeowner was having to drill individually deeper to get to water. And it was in the court system in Minneapolis. And I'm just, I, I guess I feel like we hear mixed messages from BOPU. We hear about the request for outside water use. We don't charge as much probably as we should be for outside water use. We're encouraged to, and we see recommendations sometimes from BOPU employees about approving these outside water uses. And then we're asking our residents to preserve water and to look at eliminating turf and to look at water conservation techniques. I don't know that we have a good handle on outside water use agreements as far as having given BOPU clear direction. And so I just, I'm, I'm really struggling to balance the request we get for outside water use agreements. And I know that this is probably just the beginning of those with statements that I just heard that we're asking residents to preserve water. And then we're also saying that we have enough water to go for many years. So I guess my question is, which is it? Are, are we, are we going to conserve? Or are we going to sell our water cheap to outside water users to, for the sake of development? I feel like we're a little bipolar on this issue.
Yeah, this is Bryce. I, I can definitely understand your position on the complexity of this. It is not a straightforward answer. I think that there, there are good points to all of the things that you have said. I think that the key thing to remember for me is that water is finite. While we may be able to go look for additional water rights and diversify our portfolio and do those things, there is a ceiling. At some point, we will get to that ceiling. And I think what we're trying to propose here is, let's think about the way that we want to use the water. What is the best way to use the water? That may be, you know, supporting our, our county neighbors in terms of making sure that they have healthy water to drink. I know as a, you know, growing up in Cheyenne that the ranchettes and county residents, you know, it's a big, big part of being in Cheyenne and, you know, having friends and, and folks. And I think it's a draw for people to be interested in coming to this area. From a, you know, commercial standpoint, having water available to bring in new industry and diversify our economy in Cheyenne is important. And I think that's what we're trying to get to is to try to look at this holistically and really consider what the, the most effective use of our resource is. And, and trying to come up with more analytical ways to do that and to compare one against the other so that, you know, as, as a governing body, you all have the, the information that you need to make those decisions. And then in terms of the outside water user agreements and, and giving them cheap water, I mean, right now, and I, I don't know how the number was established, but right now they're, they're charged 150% of what in water users, in-town water users are charged. I believe per state statute that can go up to 2%. But, you know, that's not something that we've looked at from a, from a BOPU standpoint operationally, depending on how these are set up, you know, they can be beneficial, you know, to the BOPU or, or not. So we really consider that case to case and, and how we set up those agreements.
Any further follow-up, Dr. Aldridge?
No, I'm good. Thank you. I don't, I don't know that there's an easy answer.
Okay, thank you. Or Mr. Seigraev, do you have any questions?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Maybe a statement before my questions. I share Dr. Aldridge's concerns and, and our use of outside users agreements. When I look at the gold mine, I think the thing that separated that in my mind was the fact that they're investing in additional resources. Their timeline is finite. It's not 100 plus years. It's bringing roughly 1,200 jobs to the community, at least for the beginning of the program. And then I believe it's 200 plus for the remainder of the program. They are paying, even though they're bringing the water to the system, they are still paying the one and a half times the rate. So when I look at a user like that, it makes sense to me to approve an outside users agreement. When I look at residential use, it doesn't have that same feeling to me. They're not bringing any additional resources. They are on the books forever. I mean, as long as those homes are there, we're agreeing to supply water to them. When we spend millions and millions and millions of dollars in recycle, in additional resources, et cetera, Wise Water Use Programs, et cetera, et cetera. So I am generally not in favor of residential outside users agreements. The other thing that concerns me is when we have this, I'm putting air quotes now, water issue, the county continues to outbuild us on an annual basis. They, they permit more homes in the county and every one of them drops a well. To, to the best of my knowledge, they're not doing any regional development of water. Why does the county continue to allow development if the water resources are so fragile? I don't know. It's, it's complicated is, is probably a understatement. But there certainly needs to be more coordination regionally. I agree with that. But I don't know how we would share our resources regionally. Who would we share them with? Burns? I mean, I don't know. Who else are we thinking about in a regional concept? So generally, and, and my other concern is legally, if we agree to the residential outside user agreement, are we, if, if everything remains the same, are we then committed to other outside user agreements for residential use? I, I can see that if we face curtailment, that that might be a factor in, in not approving one and a reason to do that. But if we don't face that, then I think we're going to approve all outside residential user agreements. So I don't know if anybody wants to comment on that, but that's my slice of, of water. Thank you.
Jim, Mr. Seigraev?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to follow up. Absolutely. Again, this is Bryce Dorr again. I, I think you're right. I think that there are, there are certain, certain situations where outside users agreements do not make sense. And I think that there are certain times where they could make sense. And, and I think that that's where it's important for us to come up with solutions that protect our water supply, that protects the city of Cheyenne and the services that it provides to, you know, users that are outside of the city and, and not contributing, you know, financially to those city resources that they may be using. And I think that, you know, we really should consider, you know, listening to some alternative approaches that could set up more of a structure that, that makes these outside users agreements beneficial for, you know, all the parties and, and helps us protect and limit potentially how much water, you know, that any of those outside users could use or would use. So I, I, I agree with you. I think that, that it's not cookie cutter. I think you look at it, you know, from a case by case basis, but I think at the same time, there's opportunity here to, you know, set precedence and, and really protect ourselves from, you know, kind of that, just let anyone in and, and do everything. I think that that, I agree with you. That would be a bad idea.
Dr. Rini?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, the Councilwoman Aldridge, the 150% that we charge was an arbitrary figure that when we, when it was first suggested years ago that we sell water to outside users agreements, we had ample water and I think, I don't remember even where it came from, whether it was recommended by BPU, but we thought, well, we'll just charge them 50% more than what we're charging in city users and reduce some of our expenses. And as Mr. Dorr said, I think state statutes allows us to charge up to 200%. And if we're going to do that, that's entirely up to us. So if I remember correctly, a residence uses point averages 0.25 acre feet of water per year. Okay. And so I mean, and Mr. Dorr, your, your figures, when you said we had 40 years of water was estimating of using 600 homes per year. Figure is that correct?
So that would be 600 new per year.
Yeah, 600 new services per year.
Yeah.
And we're averaging 300? Is that what you said?
Yeah, yeah. On average, you know, looking back to the last three or five years.
Historically, like we've done, we actually have somewhere 60 to 80 years of water.
And that's, that's, that's not considering what I, what I call the step changes. That's the, that's the big commercial. Those are the wild cards.
Resident, resident, residential isn't really the bigger concern necessarily. Residential development, it's what we allow large industrial users. Because we have what? Only 8,000 acre feet a, a year to play with? Is that? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Strong. So yeah, I mean, so that I, in some respects, that's the biggest concern. I know you, you mentioned it, the, the BPU has, has had discussions with leads and I mean, those are the things we really need to consider is what kind of development we're going to have in the future because it's the large industrial users that are going to have the greater impact. And so, but two other things I want to touch on, and one in the pictures you showed on, on the two examples that you showed of, thank you. There's a lot of rock there. And I still think we need to develop something that doesn't have, have use as much rock. I mean, that, that absorbs a lot of heat. It reflects a lot of heat. And so overall, you know, I don't think that's all that beneficial. So hoping we're continuing to work. And I know we've talked, I know that I've talked to Mr. Bloom about what we can put in the tree lawn areas or the park lawn areas that doesn't require water, but other than rock. So I think we're kind of working on that separately. And lastly, and this is kind of off the wall, but I watched a podcast last week that talked about in-home recycling systems. I mean, their point was that 24% on the average, 24% of potable water gets flushed down the toilet, which is just an estate. I mean, a quarter of the use in our home just is flushed away. But there are, there are, apparently there are units or systems out there where you can run your water through that and at least have kind of gray water for your home to use in some areas that don't involve cooking or drinking. And I think those are just on the horizon, but if, if that becomes a viable alternative, is that something that BPU can look at? You know, giving like credits or something to, if somebody installs a system like that. So I'm just throwing that one out there because that was something I'd never, wasn't even aware of.
Chairman Robb, if I may, this is Sarah Bargson of the Board of Public Utilities. I just want to comment on a, a few things that have been discussed already. And the reason for water conservation is to make sure we're using water efficiently. It's not to preserve it, it's to conserve it. And there's a big difference in, in that approach. And the decisions we make about how we use our water affects how our community looks into the future. We want to encourage, you know, and we want to reimagine a new landscape aesthetic is something I keep saying because landscape irrigation is approximately 30% of is something I keep saying, because landscape irrigation is approximately thirty percent of our annual potable water usage. We're putting drinking water on plants. That costs us money. Um, and like I mentioned in a previous slide, we are looking to expand some of our water conservation programs. Um, and uh, looking at incentives and rebates. So there are a lot of um, programs we can explore. And I've started with the outreach for upgrades and repair our water, which is a free water conservation kit to any B O P U customer who lives in a home that's older than nineteen ninety-four. And that includes a free low-flow showerhead, um, faucet aerators and uh, toilet die tabs to look for leaks. And uh, and yeah, again, so if we can, if we can address landscape irrigation and leaks, we will ensure a, a strong economy for Cheyenne's future. Thank you.
Sir.
Well, thank you to the Wise Water Use Committee. I've, I've been involved and it does uh, benefit us to have a group that's working on this to come with presentations such as this. That's very high-quality presentation. Um, one of my questions is uh, when you talk about a regional system, we have a large uh, what I would consider to be a locally regional system with South Cheyenne Shore and Water. Does this, this state of Wyoming consider that to be a regional system?
You know, I've never asked. Um, on the applications, I, I, I do say that we have consecutive systems, which is what we're calling those right now. Um, I think if we brought something like this, um, you know, residential system that was pre-existing, that has issues and we kind of absorb them. I think that's a little bit viewed, maybe a little bit differently than the two that, you know, they've all, the other two have kind of grown with the city. Um, but I could follow up on that and, and get verification on how they would consider, you know, what a regional system would be.
And so we discussed the uh, nineteen ninety-three uh, document uh, that looked at North Cheyenne and the well situation. And I think that it's uh, very important for us to regionally consider that because we all know that a lot of development has occurred out in the county with wells and septics uh, over that thirty years. And it was suggested earlier that perhaps there were uh, grant funds available to take a look at it. Because I have a real hard time trying to grasp exactly what they're talking about. How many wells are going dry? How deep are they? How do we identify and analyze uh, that use of uh, those septic systems? Or some people probably are very diligent. Some people might not be. And then the grouping and the entire use. So there's no doubt that in North Cheyenne, or north of Cheyenne, I guess I should say, uh, we got a problem. I have a real hard time understanding the magnitude of it, considering the fact that this last analysis was thirty years ago, which did point out that uh, I assume that continuing thought and analysis occurs. So uh, I think that's real important. And I, I did want to mention that uh, when we talk about the, our staying yield into the future. Um, and in the discussions that I've been around and, and the research that I've done, uh, certainly the big fear is curtailment in the sense that the valve is shut. But what are the other possibilities there? Might we receive a uh, order less? Might we receive half less? Might we um, have a system that come, as was demonstrated one of your slides mentioned earlier, those big lower states have come to some agreement or some understanding thanks to that uh, federal funding. But we upper states haven't done so. So when we talk about curtailment, uh, I'd sure like to know more about. It's a very scary concept, but are we going to be looking at partial, full? How, how do we look down the road twenty years, as you suggested, Mr. Door? Um, knowing that something's going to change. How serious is it and how long does it take for us to understand that? I know there's been, the, the board, certainly the staff has certainly studied the matter. Uh, so are you uh, going to answer the question, Mr. Strong?
I, I will do my best.
Okay.
Um, right now with the way the Colorado River Compact is established, it all comes down to what gets delivered at Lee Ferry to lower states that running average is seven and a half. If we drop below that and Wyoming provides, I believe, I want to say fourteen percent, but don't, don't quote me on that. Um, you know, Wyoming contributes fourteen percent of the water to the lower basins. And it gets determined that, you know, we're short a million acre feet and we have to make that up. That means that's a hundred and forty thousand acre feet that we would have to, as the state of Wyoming, reduce by. I know the state engineer has looked at this, the, the office. And essentially they felt if we saw something that magnitude, we would lose all of our water rights in the little, on Little Snake, the Colorado River. So right now, we really feel if there is a curtailment, we would lose all of our water rights.
Well, that certainly is a, a very serious consideration and one that um, the discussion we're having here, uh, certainly uh, Cheyenne can be proud of its reduction and its flatlining of uh, that uh, water use over the past number of years. But I, I really wonder how we can look at the possibility of ultimate curtailment considering uh, those costs and the, the, the whole concept of of water development on the Belvoir, for example, or the expanded reuse that's been talked about. So complex matter, but one that uh, has a big hammer at one end of it.
Uh, and that's very true. So right now, the um, the director and myself have been working with several water rights in the North Plate River Basin, trying to secure something, some additional water rights that we can utilize during a curtailment so that we don't have to go from twenty-two thousand acre feet of water available down to seven. We're, we're actively trying to secure some redundant sources so that during a curtailment, we still could utilize our water. But you do bring up a very valid point. Uh, I found some documentation when we secured the stage two funding in the nineteen seventy-seven, seventy-eight era. At that time, the city of Cheyenne was using twelve to fourteen thousand acre feet of water a year. Right now, today, we're using twelve to fourteen thousand acre feet of water per year. And that's how powerful water conservation has been. And that's why we are pushing this right now. If we continue to have good water conservation, use our water wisely, that forty, sixty, eighty years may turn into a hundred and sixty years because we're using our water wisely. And that's why we are all here today.
Mr. Chairman, um, in, in my discussions, we've talked about, for instance, some of the large projects that have been going on with the uh, data centers, for instance. And the ability of the staff here, the water conservation staff here to comment and involve themselves in those site plans upfront. And furthermore, have some enforcement capacity. So my question to the staff here, that basically to the board itself, is, is there any funding in the existing budget and models that we have for enforcement? So that we were not uh, dependent on. And, and I, this has a lot of implication. Uh, I remind the members of the council to a lot of our tree initiatives, our, our efforts on the business parks. So um, I just wanted to mention that before we had to close. Thank you.
Dr. Rini?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I kind of follow up to what Councilman Laborne said. I was going to point out that as a council, we need to um, look at our landscaping requirements when, when the original, I put a lot of work into the original landscaping requirements in the early eighties. And back then, again, we had all sorts of water. Also, back then, we were not getting large developments like we are now. And if, I know, um, again, Mr. Bloom has heard this, the mayor's heard this from Leeds. But with these large um, multi-acre projects, we're requiring a significant, significant amount of trees to be planted and sometimes just out on the prairie. If you look at the Microsoft development out south. So um, as I said, when we wrote the landscaping ordinances, we didn't have projects like that. So that's something as a council that we need to look at. Do we want to scale back those requirements, at least for trees and, and large projects like that? Or, or have them do some kind of um, group landscaping? And we need to look at alternatives. Um, another question I had going back to regional systems also, I, I was going to ask that and again, Councilman Laborne kind of hit on that. Is there a definition of what a regional system is? And how do we comply with that? I know the mayor has told me that B P U serves, I think, a seventh of all the taps in the state of Wyoming. So how is that not a regional system? Um, and, and how much money can we take in, in the way of grants if we create a regional system? And then do we have to start doing those O U As differently? And how much more? I mean, what's the trade-off on that? Do we make more than what we're spending? So that was a question I had. Lastly, I'm just um, you, Mr. Dory, you'd said that, the, the, I know the federal government with their one point two billion or whatever has bought some time in, in the lower Colorado basin. But are those contracts expire in twenty twenty-six? That's going to be an interesting year. Is that right, Lonnie?
Here's a, you're the doctor, and that is correct. They'll expire and they'll likely be in courtrooms. That is going to be figured out.
That'll be a very interesting year.
So we also have thirty uh, tribes set.
Yeah. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and you'll indulge me. I have a couple of three questions that are probably yes, no's. Okay? So like with the aquifers, let's say the one on the bell, we developed that, can we pump out as much as we can get out of there before anybody else gets it? Or do we have a acre feet that we can take per year?
I think we can take what the aquifer will deliver. And we're looking at that right now. Um, there's a, there's a certain water right that we have, but um, there's a certain amount that the aquifer can deliver. Um, initially uh, estimates were total for the whole Bellbor somewhere around three thousand acre feet a year. Uh, we're looking right now that it's potentially less than that. Um, so so long as we're not, you know, impacting other water right uh, owners in the area, specifically down on a bell. Um, you know, we can pump those. But there, but there is a limited amount of water that can come out of that system.
And then to kind of follow up on Dr. Rini's question about twenty twenty-six and the water rights expiring, what do we do? Do we hire a busload of attorneys now and try to get in early? Do we, you know, put a fence up? What?
Uh, Frank Strong with the B O P U. It's not so much that our water rights expire. It's the interim guidance documents for the upper and lower basins have to be renegotiated on how they handle different reservoir levels and that kind of stuff. So essentially, we're going to have a, potentially a whole new rulebook in twenty-six that has to be agreed upon by both the upper and lower basin. Mexican tribes.
We can't just turn the lower basin off.
Unfortunately, the way the uh, Colorado Compact was written, they felt there was fifteen million acre feet a year available. And essentially, we as the upper states have an obligation to deliver half of that to the lower states. Um, so that's something that's going to have to be worked out.
Okay. And then my last one is uh, so we buy the water, you sell it to the end user, me. I, I use it in my house. I flush, I take a shower. It goes out to the bottom pipe to the treatment plant. So that water's already been used. Do we have to release that water back into Crow Creek or whatever after, after we've treated it? Can we use to recycle that or?
We are not, we don't have a requirement to release that water back into Crow Creek. Um, most notably the trans-basin water, definitely, but we can use that till extinction. Right now, um, we are evaluating the, the, in basin water. But yes, we believe we can use it to extinction. So until we release it into Crow Creek and lose control of it, we have the right to recycle it, uh, sell it, um, you know, whatever we want to do with it.
Much, how many acre feet a year do we go through or cut, comes through the treatment?
I'm going to have to do quick math.
Good. Glad you're doing the math.
Uh, I would say we probably six to seven thousand acre feet.
So would it be cheaper to recycle that into maybe not potable or some irrigation stuff than it would be to build? Dig a hole in the Bellbor and start all the water out of that?
Um, I'd have to do the analysis. It really comes down to more of the operational expenses. Reuse water is by far the most expensive water we produce because of all the pumping required. But we are currently at the Dry Creek uh, water reclamation facility. We recycle every drop of water we can. We could actually use more water there to produce more water for the, the uh, parks. Uh, challenge we're running into right now to build a pipeline to bring more water to the Crow Creek is, was at a price tag of ten million. I don't know how much it is now after COVID. So it's, we uh, at the board have kind of set a rule of thumb. If we can find water that's less than eight thousand dollars an acre foot, it is a good deal. And that's the direction we should go. And so that's kind of what we, we're trying to find that low-hanging, most economical water first.
Any further questions from committee? Any hands up? We don't take public comment during uh,
Be happy to talk to you.
Yes.
Uh, Chair, I just wanted to uh, close out here. Anyone, um, at least from my perspective, if anyone wants to reach out, our emails are available. Um, if there are any uh, topics you want to discuss in further detail, we're all available for that. And um, yeah, just uh, thank you for your time.
Okay. Did you send us your PowerPoint or can you?
Lonnie will make sure that's available.
Okay, great. No further questions from committee. Uh, we're adjourned. Thank you for.